We'll call item one A, we'll call a possible action for the exhumation of any absent member of the governing board.
Ambrosio Hernandez, Commissioner Lestar Juajardo.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Mayor pretend Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Eza Flores.
Present.
Excuse us, excuse absent members.
Second.
For a second. Hail those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Thank you. Item number B, pledge allegiance and invocation by Luis.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we give you all that we are this day. Please brush away our weariness so that we may be inspired to our, in our work. Help us to discover new ways to reveal goodness in all. Keep our mind clear and focused on all we need to know, achieve, and give us all the wisdom to overcome difficulties and find solutions. Amen.
Thank Luis. Item number two, proclamations. Phil, do you know if Luis is here? Yeah, the proclamation? Okay, we can come back to two A. We'll go ahead and skip two A, go to public testimony, item number three. Anybody sign up? No? Public hearings, anybody sign up? All right, going down to city manager reports. Yes, mayor commissioners, I have a couple of reports for you today. Item number five A, city engineers reports, the reports in your packet. All projects are pretty much on track. Do you have any questions? Maria Raquel is in the audience.
So move.
Well, I don't need a motion, just.
Oh, I thought it was a consent.
Oh, sorry, not yet. The five Bs, submission of property tax collection report for December 2021. Yes, we are at forty four point seven eight collection to date. We are up seven point four nine percent from the same time last year, so we're doing better. Item number C, the city's submission of first quarter 2021, 2022 city of our investment reports. Yes, mayor commissioners, the reports are in your packet. It entails all the investments the city has, tech school, to CDs, to everything else, everything is making us money, and we're doing good. If you have any particular questions, finance directors in the audience. All right, I do have a couple more reports for you. Danny, want to come up? And everybody involved want to come up too? This cardiac save?
The good afternoon. Mayor commissioned, for the record, Daniel Ramirez, EMS chief. So we still have some staff there, they're on their way. It's been a busy day for EMS, so hopefully they get here before we finish. If not, we'll make sure we recognize them. So in 2018, the city of R began the process of integrating dispatch into one center, public safety communications, so that we could have PD, fire, and EMS dispatch all in one place. And the reason we wanted to do that is so that we could provide a better service to the community. And so, on August 5th, 2020, our public safety communications received a call for cardiac arrest. Working together, telecommunications officers Juan Salinas and Carlos Seven Daniel began getting important information and began to provide pre arrival instructions on giving CPR while dispatching the units. Soon thereafter, police officers Albert Ramirez and Cesar Maldonado took over CPR from valley members. Within six minutes from the initial nine one call, for EMS medic unit one, medic one, with paramedic Dinora Mendosa and EMT Jesus Valderas, Captain Andrew Castellano, Deputy Chief Wens Guzman, along with Far Fire ladder one engineer Jose Gonzalez, firefighter Ricardo Ramirez, and firefighter Ezekiel Science, working together with a team approach, soon they got RASK. What is RASK is return spontaneous circulation. So this person was in cardiac arrest, their heart had completely stopped, they had completely stopped breathing, and soon after arriving, they were able to resuscitate this person. After arriving in doctor's hospital at Renaissance, the patient was transferred over to their staff for definitive care. Mr. Yasi was finally released from rehab of the first week of December. So from August until December, these are the type of calls that we all live for. And are pride and are proud to recognize our staff, who as a team worked together diligently to save Mr. Yasi's life. Unfortunately, Mr. Yasi is not feeling well today. He couldn't make it, he really wanted to be here, but he did send a message, and our media department went out there to his house, and we have a message for Mr. Yasi.
Hi. Your, your name is what, Oscar Isasi, right? My name is Uci Isasi, I'm his wife, and we are so grateful for the, for the paramedics that came over. They were here in just less than five minutes. It was like, I mean, I didn't expect them to be here so fast. They arrived very fast and they, there was a, there's a lady that lived with us, a young lady, and she started the CPR, but they, they took over, they took over quickly, and they did whatever they had to do. It was in a, in a very short time that they did what they were supposed to do. And now he's here. At first, the doctor had said, you know, just pull the plug, but I said no, because I knew that he was coming back. He was saying help through, through the, through the tube that he had inside. And so I knew that he was coming back. And here he is. How do you feel, baby?
Feel a lot better, yes.
And so with the continued work of working as a team with PD, fire, EMS, and communications, this is not going to be the last time that we, that we see an outcome like this, and we're so, we're proud to recognize them. Also joining us is DHR and their staff, who provided definitive care after we arrived at the hospital. I don't know if you want to say anything, Daniel?
Thank you guys for everything that you do. We're really proud to have a good team out here, and everybody works together to, you know, get these outcomes. This is, this is what it's intended to do. Thank you.
And so with that, I'd like to do, recognize staff that responded. So we have a lifesaving clinical excellence commendation, and it says the commendation is awarded as a result of an act to save a human life that otherwise would have expired without immediate intervention to the far public safety, far public safety system, communications, EMS, PD, and fire. So this is presented to Officer Cesar Maldonado. Officer Alberto Ramirez. Telecommunications officer Juan Salinas. Telecommunications officer Carlos Avindano. Paramedic Dinora Mendosa, she's actually on a truck right now. She was trying to get here, but she was clearing a call, so I'm going to hand this over to Deputy Chief. Captain Andrew Castellano is also working right now, so he was trying to get here, but it's been busy. Deputy Chief Wens Guzman, who was unseen. Engineer Jose Gonzalez. Firefighter Ezekiel Science. Firefighter Ricardo Lumigas. And so without the hard work of these gentlemen and women, I don't think we would have had the outcome that we did, and I'm super proud to be part of a system where everybody works together and to help save a life. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations and very, very good job. The next one we have is Chamber. You have a couple of events this weekend?
Good afternoon. I'm Elina Gonzalez, membership manager at the Far Chamber. So we have two upcoming events these two weeks. Every second Saturday of the month, we have our hot market day. This Saturday, February the 12th will be the Valentine's themed from five to nine PM at our downtown park. We'll have market vendors selling pastries, handcrafted items, and food trucks outside the downtown park with a special performance by musician Muffin Leon. To be part of our vendor market, you can sign up at our website, greaterfarchamber.com. Up next, we have our winter texting golf tournament. It's the fourth year we host it at the Red Sol Golf Course. It's an all day event. Registration begins at eight in the morning, and shotgun starts at nine in the morning. There will be prizes for first, second, and third place. Deadline to sign up is next Wednesday. I invite all of you to attend to these fun events that are hosted by the Chamber for prizes, family fun time, great music, and good food. Thank you.
American, there's a couple more. We have, is the food bank here? Yeah, come on up.
Hi, how y'all doing today? We are here to do a check presentation. City of R has sponsored our farm dinner at level 3,000, and we also want to make sure that we thank y'all for all the support that y'all give the food bank. Y'all know that we cannot do this without the support of the city, your PD, your EMS, everybody that's in this room, that was in this room also. They play such a huge part in all the people that we serve right here. We know we cause a lot of traffic jams, but people do not wait in line for food unless they absolutely need it, and we strongly believe that. And that's what we do. We help people out, and we cannot do that without the help of y'all. So we appreciate y'all's support all the time that y'all help us. So I have Olivia here, Philip, my co-CEO, also Connie and Rosie, and we thank y'all for, again, all support.
Thank you. Money, money well deserved. Y'all do a, yeah.
Thank you.
Take a picture with you. Thank you. Yes, we have a couple more to go. PD chief Robles, come on up.
Good afternoon. For the record, Joel Robles, Assistant Chief of Police for the Far Police Department. I have Sergeant Daniel Garcia with our community engagement unit, Roel Enohosa, and Anthony Rivera from our Parks Recreation Department. But ladies and gentlemen from the commission, today I don't want to come and talk to you guys as the Assistant Chief of Police. I want to talk to you guys as a volunteer coach. I've had the great honor and distinct pleasure to be a volunteer coach with the city of R in various sports, and I want to tell you guys, we have a gem in our Parks and Recreation Department. The, the program that we have, the outreach that we have to the, to different number of youth that we have in this city, it's, it's just outstanding. And I just wanted to commend these gentlemen and their directors for the work that they do. The reason that I'm here is when, I love football. Roel allows me to coach football, and when we came across the, the football campaign, I asked the chief, hey, can you help us create a patch? Can you help us create a patch so that we can put on all the football jerseys? And, you know, Chief Harvey, his mantra has always been, hey, it takes a department to lift the city. And what he told me, Joel, we're not going to build, we're not going to create a patch, we're going to pay for the whole jerseys. So through our seized asset funds, we were able to purchase three hundred, three hundred jerseys for all the boys and girls that played in our tackle football campaign. Extremely proud of what we do. I wanted to thank you for the time that you gave us, and if you indulge me for a little bit, between Parks and Us, we would like to present Chief Harvey with a jersey, thanking him for the work that he did and getting us a jersey. Chief, can you join us, sir, please? Your boss, just on behalf of Parks and Rec and PD staff, we wanted to say thank you for helping us with the jerseys.
I want to reiterate, this is Andy Harvey, I'm the Chief of Police. Listen, I want to, I want to reiterate what Joel said. There's no better way to lift up a city than to invest in our kids. And, and what better way to use drug money to, 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 to lift up our kids' football or anything else that they do. So we're just taking on what the city believes in. This is the most generous city I've ever worked for, and we're just doing what you guys are doing, and because of your support. So I'm humbled, but it's, it's all of us, and this is going to be probably displayed in our, our office. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Closer, closer.
Thank you. Congratulations. Couple more, couple more, and we will go into the regular agenda. HR Veronica, Veronica, come on up.
Good afternoon. Veronica Ramirez, HR Director, for the record. I'm approaching you today because we have an initiative that we'd like your, your help with. We'd like for you to pledge. Every year, It's Time Texas is a nonprofit organization that every year has this project. Starts on January through the, through February the 27th. And so basically, it's a health initiative. So it's community and employer. So we're participating both for the employer, for the city of R, and the city of R as a community as a whole. So I think we distributed some pledges for every one of you. If, if you would, you know, support us in signing that, we would really appreciate it. Just to give you kind of an idea where we're at, on the community level, we're number three statewide. This is a statewide competition. So community level, we're at seven, almost 800,000 points. And so obviously, the pledges, the events that we hold, all of that are points towards this, this, this project. Citywide, we're a little further down, we're number eight. But obviously, the pledges will help us, and we, you know, we continue to promote it, medias on this, and so they're going to be promoting it on social website as, as well. And so that'll give us more points. So that's what we're basically asking you for, for your help on pledging.
All right, we're going to pledge outside you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last one is Julie. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Yuri Gonzalez, Far Media City Communications. Well, the tri-far warrior race had a lot of positive feedback. Everyone loved it. And of course, this was the first year, so we're hoping that next year, when we go ahead and move forward with this event, we have more people sign up, more people that work for the city get involved. You know, we, we noticed that there was many people that drove from other cities. Actually, one of the winners was from Laredo, so we really want more people to get involved. And this is just a recap of, you know, some of the highlights we saw throughout the, the warrior race.
My shoes weren't at the second transition area. Either I use or take off, so I took off and I pretty much remember it.
I'm glad I did it. It was, for me, it's a, it's a personal endeavor that I wanted to achieve. I wanted to show myself, first of all, that I can do it. And second of all, show the people that anybody, no matter what shape you're in, at your pace, you can absolutely do it.
The auditorium, easily, my favorite part of the race. It's unbelievable facility. In the valley, there aren't a lot of options for us. So to have something that's so nice and accessible, perfect.
Example is the best teacher. Exactly, we should just set the example. So here we are.
We are Team Far.
So good job to everyone that was out there that day. I know it took a lot of manpower, you know, to get this event going for the first year. Hopefully, next year it's bigger and better, and we've already started working on some little promotional, we've already started working on some promotional videos, you know, just to make sure we don't promote this event last minute. We want to make sure we are promoting it throughout the year, as we are getting ready throughout the year. So I don't know if our media department has a second video ready, and this is just little teasers that we want to put out into our community. So again, short videos just to get people hyped, and you know, we start promoting throughout the year. And again, thank you for everybody that made this event possible. We did have a GoPro camera on the mayor's helmet throughout the entire experience. He's not here, so we're going to wait for that one, but it's already up on social media. If you want to see his experience and, you know, some of his struggles and challenges, but good job to everybody that was part of this, commissioners, and, and everybody that was just out there. Hopefully, next year it's bigger and better, and we have more people involved in the tri-far warrior race for 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do need a picture for when you all sign. So afterwards, whenever you want.
Yes, so mayor commissioners, going back to item number two, proclamations, two A proclamation. Proclamation, two A, proclamation proclaiming the month of February 2022 as Black History Month.
Patricia. Will the individual?
Yes, they should come up. Come on up. Yeah, he's ready.
I apologize. Please forgive me. Please forgive me for not being here on time.
No worries.
Thank you. Can I take this?
So whereas during National Black History Month, we celebrate the vast contributions of blacks to our nation's history and identity. And whereas each year, February is designated Black History Month to remember and reflect on the tribulations faced by the black community, while learning from the vibrant culture and history and celebrating its many invaluable contributions. And whereas shining a light on black history today is as important to understanding ourselves and growing stronger as a nation as it has ever been. That is why it is essential that we take time to celebrate the immeasurable contribution of black Americans, honor the legacies and achievements of generations past, reckon with centuries of injustice, and confront those injustices that still fester today. And whereas the 2022 national theme for the observance is black health and wellness. This theme acknowledges the legacy of not only black scholars and medical practitioners in Western medicine, but also other ways of knowing, for example, birth workers, doulas, midwives, naturopaths, herbalists, et cetera, throughout the African diaspora. And whereas the city of R is deeply committed to equity and inclusion, and as such honors the contributions made by our black community, and wishes not only to acknowledge them, but to commemorate and celebrate the contributions made by local residents. And whereas our community is better because of their contribution, resilience, and fortitude, who contributed in music, sports, academic, business, and economics, and the overall growth, overall progress and well-being of Fars growth and development. Now, therefore, on behalf of the mayor, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of R Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in him, and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2022 as Black History Month.
Thank you. On behalf of Village in the Valley, which is a nonprofit organization that started about three years ago, thanks to COVID, it's been a little challenging to get out, but we have been actively seeking to build bridges between the black community, the black culture, and all of the other diverse cultures that exist here in the valley. We appreciate your acknowledgement of the contributions that blacks have made, and we look forward to working with you and sharing with you and experiencing our valley and our cultures together. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Please check out the website and the Facebook page. There's a lot of stuff going on this month, and come on out and enjoy some with us.
Come on up, they're going to get a picture.
Thank you.
Okay. We're back on regular agenda, mayor commissioners, item number six, consent agenda. All items are routine and non-controversial and can be enacted in one motion, so you shall choose.
Second.
For a second, any comments? I in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. Thank you. Seven A, ordinances and resolutions, consideration, action, if any, a resolution appointing one member to the Parks Recreation Advisory Board. Yes, mayor commissioners, we have one opening. Staff is recommending Erica. Skravia? Skravia, Skravia. She's a, does her part. A second. I in favor? Motion pass. Thank you. Seven B, consideration, action, if any, a resolution appointing, reappointing seven members, regular members to the Red Soul Golf Club Advisory Board. Yes, mayor commissioners, six of those seven members want to be reappointed, so it's the existing board. Oscar Villagomez decided to retire from. Uh, Oscar Villagomez decided to retire from voluntary service, uh, which I was recommending to replace with Hector Gomez.
Second, first and second. Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Eight A, consideration, action, if any, on accepting the City of Far single audit for fiscal year 2019-2020. Yes, American Commissioners, this is the 2019-2020 audit on all of our state and federal grants headed up by the Grants, Grants Department. Uh, no big findings in there. The biggest thing was the, um, lack of controls on our P card, which we addressed last year when we brought you a, um, new ordinance on the purchasing manual. So that's been corrected. Remember, this is 2019-2020.
Move to approve.
Uh, first and second. Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Um, nine, purchasing, nine A, consideration, action, if any, authorized city manager to purchase fiber and supplies for the citywide fiber project from Graybar Inc. out of Fort Worth, Texas. Omnia Cooperative Contract Number EV2370 and the amount not to exceed $8,464,812.60.
Move to approve.
First and second. Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Ten A, consideration, action, if any, on interlocal agreement with Alamo County and the City of Far for library services for calendar year 2022. Uh, yes, sir, this is, uh, existing contract in fact for years. Staff is recommending approval.
First and second. Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Ten B, consideration, action, if any, on interlocal agreement between the City of Far and Dow County for rural emergency services. Yes, this does cover fire. Uh, and I believe EMS services for the county areas are ETJ. We get paid per call. Staff is recommending approval.
Move to approve.
Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Ten T, consideration, action, if any, a memorandum of understanding between Farm, McAllen, Enberg, and San Juan Fire Departments to provide automatic mutual aid on Interstate 2 and Interstate 69, I-69, um, Central as part of Texas Interchange Construction Project. Yes, American Commissioners, um, what this does, it's a, the interchange is under construction and it's so wide. Um, we want to put in some automatic mutual aid, uh, our fire chief, but I don't think this has been hitting this up with, uh, surrounding cities. What this does, I'll give you an example. Um, if you have from Jackson to 10th Street and they're coming westbound, or they're coming, sorry, they're coming eastbound, going towards Far and they come into Far. For us to get on there, we got to go down to 10th Street and come back around to get on the expressway because of construction. McAllen can get there faster. So that's what we're doing, where there's automatic mutual aid on the other side of the city limits or on our side. Wherever we get there faster, we'll get there faster. They get there as soon as seen. By the time we get there, to back them up or take over the scene. So that's what it does for all, all the surrounding cities.
Move to approve.
First and second. Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Ten D, consideration, action, if any, authorized city manager to extend supply contract for the purchase and delivery of fire department uniforms with Costco Industries, Inc. from Port La Vara, La Vara, Texas, La Porta, Texas. Uh, yes, sir, this is, um, I believe, third year, not sure. This is the third renewal, third and final renewal. Staff is recommending approval.
First and second. Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Ten E, consideration, action, if any, authorized city manager to extend supply contract for the purchase and delivery of fire department uniforms with Galls LLC from Lexington, Kentucky. Also, the third and final renewal. Staff is regular approval.
First and second. Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Ten F, consideration, action, if any, authorized city manager to extend supply contract for the purchase and delivery of structural firefighting personal protective equipment for the fire department from NAFCO, Inc. from Dakar, Alabama. That was recommended approval. This is the final contract also, final year? Yes, sir. Okay.
Second. First and second. Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Ten G, consideration, action, if any, authorized city manager to extend supply contract for the purchase and delivery of structural firefighter personal protective equipment and far, for the fire department to Delta Industrial Services and supply from Port Neches, Texas. Also, the last year, staff is recommending approval.
First and second. Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Ten H, consideration, action, if any, authorized city manager to extend supply contract for the purchase and delivery of fire department activewear to North Lean LTD DBA Printex Express from Far Texas.
First and second. Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Ten I, consideration, action, if any, authorized city manager to extend service contracts for the pickup of used tires and rubber scrap removal and disposable, disposal recycling services to Texas Land Reclamation DBA UTW Tire Collection Services out of Donna, Texas. Yes, sir, this I believe is the final year also. Staff is recommending approval.
To approve.
First and second. Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
And that is all I have, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Aye in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.